I will. All right, guys. Start this. Do the. Ah, call to order, Manito Springs Metropolitan District, uh, October meeting today is October sixteen and it is, uh, three thirty-three, not bad. Um, Kristen, would you do the roll call for us by any chance?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Secretary Michael Barsati.
President.
Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Director Mike Graham.
Is he, he's just muted?
Yeah, I see, I see your hand up, so.
Hang, how's that better? Okay, thank you, sorry.
No worries. Treasurer Walt Jacobson.
Here.
And Chairman Shamish Loma.
I am here. Uh, thank you. Thank you. Um, all right, approval of the agenda, um. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be five to zero, uh, Mike Graham is seconded. Thank you, uh, we're gonna start with the consent calendar, uh, regular meeting minutes, uh. Okay, I'll let you guys, um. Do the approval for this, cuz I wasn't there.
I'll make a motion that we approved the minutes as written. Since I was there.
For the September London meeting.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, that was, uh, Mike Graham, thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, okay, that would be three to zero, actually, cuz, uh, only Ralph, uh, Mike Graham and Larry were there present, so let's just go with three to zero, three to zero. And, um, me and I believe first study did not, uh, vote on that. Okay, uh, reports, parking report. Let's see if, uh, James is here.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Excellent.
How've you been, James?
Oh, not too bad, it's, it's been a little busy for us, but, uh, working through it.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so, has everyone had a chance to take a look at the numbers? And does anybody have any questions regarding?
Well, my look briefly, I saw that, uh, more of the same, uh, Wichita is going ups, Mishni is going down a little bit, no, less, uh, definitely less transactions. Um. That's what I saw, I also saw, by the way, that, uh, transactions are ninety-nine percent credit card. At, uh, Smishni and ninety-eight percent of, uh, at Wichita, so in credit card, so hardly, hardly any cash.
Yeah, so that's, that's a trend for us as well.
Cool, yeah, it looks like some of them are a hundred percent, uh, so. Okey-dokey, uh, any questions for James? All right, no question. Thank you for the report, James, I appreciate it.
Of course.
Um, next is the finance report, hi Nicole. You're muted.
You couldn't hear me say aye, no, I'm gonna fix it. All right, and let's go ahead and share the screen, I don't know if anybody glanced at this, there's nothing really, um, that I need to point out for this month. Where's my sharing?
I believe you asked for, uh, numbers for the budget.
We will need to do that, that's in new business, I see on the agenda, so I'm just gonna quickly bring up as.
Okay.
Soon as I get to the share and have this up at the same time.
Recording.
Okay. Can everyone see the screen?
Um, coming up, not yet.
Blank screen so far, there it is.
Oh.
Okay, this is the September only, like you said, we don't have any real big surprises. Uh, Mike went to know what was in the professional services. Uh, Mike will agree on that is, so, um, there were, was one invoice there from DDB Services for the survey zone, structural engineering and construction meeting, and then there were a couple of invoices from Ronnie Curry for the backflow device testing and a couple of repairs, so. That should not be a big deal, uh. That was a total of eleven thousand nine fifteen, it looks like. Do you have questions on anything else for September?
Uh, I didn't have a question, but just because you were speaking about invoices, I just emailed you another invoice, that invoice is for Marcus Electric, uh, we had to change a couple of things, uh, fix the lights that are on the restroom, uh, structure over there that were not working, uh, so he did some, uh, wiring and a couple more things to get it going, so I, I emailed that invoice, just so you're aware.
Okay, I, I did, uh, send you back things saying I'll get it up there, up today or load it into the account system, and we did get a bill that was higher than normal also from Colorado Springs Utilities.
Okay, for the e- electricity?
Um. I thought it was more expensive than normal, but it looks like it was actually less. All right, I misspoke, I'm so sorry.
Okay, we'll take less, it's all good. Less is, less is better. Okay, any, any questions for Nicole? Um, okay, since no one has a question, I just, uh, wanna make sure that, uh, do you know Nicole, if the city, I actually looked at it, um, you guys getting to the end of paying for the services, city services for this, for the year?
I, I pay it every month, if you want me to go ahead and put the rest of it for the entire year on there, for next month.
Uh, I, I think maybe, uh, in next month will be a good, good, good thing to do it, that way we're, we're up in, you know, paid, paid in full, um. Thought I saw it over here, I'm, I'm actually looking for it, uh. It's in July, July.
For finishers, this is the one, um, right here.
Yeah, I think we're at forty-eight thousand, uh, and we're, you guys should be taking another, what, fourteen thousand dollars till the end of the year? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, yeah, just wanna make sure. Um, and a question for you, did someone from Pinnacle, uh, consultant reaching you and asking questions and setting things up, or did they not do that yet?
Setting things up, I just paid a bill. Stuff, but I can't really change anything yet as far as giving them, uh, contact information until we get your EIN set, set up.
Okay, yeah, and I've been leaving messages and hopefully they've done that, uh, I'll be checking on it, I left another message, uh, yesterday or the day before, and I'm waiting for them to call me back, so I'll be following up on everything, uh, starting Monday, um, and I will definitely update you.
Okay, I just spoke with Irene yesterday, so she did not know that they needed to do that, or maybe she just need to be reminded, so I just talked to her yesterday, that has not yet been done, so. But that and getting the, you'll need that before you get the bank account set up or anything, so that's really the number one priority right now.
All right, I'll follow up on that, actually, today when I'm done with the meeting, um.
All right, um, do you guys care if we just go on to new business, since they're both finance oriented?
Uh, yeah, we can do that, uh, new business, uh, let's see, discussion regarding the twenty-twenty-five budget.
So it was the budget and also on, uh, when to do the last payroll for the employees?
Yes.
So. The last payroll that's going to be paid this year is the one from twelve-one to twelve-fourteen, and then the payroll date for us will be on twelve-twenty. So, really want you guys to have your payroll in place, beginning December fifteenth.
How about we go two weeks before that, Nicole, so we're not stretching it to the last minute, and you have holidays and Christmas and stuff over there, how about we go? Cuz, um, I've already spoken to the employees and I kinda informed, um, all of them about what's going on. Um, and I, and I said that I'm gonna show up with details here pretty soon. Um, I'd rather be safe than sorry, I don't wanna put you in a position last minute over there, so what would be the payroll before that?
Well, the payroll before that is in November, and so it's eleven seventeen through eleven-thirty. And the payroll date would be on twelve-six.
Okay, twelve-six, okay, and you're comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then November thirty-eighth, basically will be their last day of, uh, work, correct?
Of time on timesheets with the city, correct?
Okay, all right.
If we need to do the next payroll, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that we don't have any W-two's for the following year that are required.
Absolutely, yeah, we don't want that either, okay, all right, November thirtieth, that's what I'm gonna say when I feed them, um, any questions? Yes.
Yeah, Jimmy, uh, so, we would be responsible for paying them for the month of December?
Um, no, they're, they're working, they're working their last payday, or payroll, sorry, is November seventeen to November thirtieth.
Okay, so that, that's the end of their employment altogether?
Correct, and they will get paid on December, uh, six, uh, that will be their payday, correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole?
Correct.
Okay, so they're gonna be paid, their last payday, their last paycheck will be paid, uh, on December sixth, and we're trying to basically avoid, if they will work the whole month of, uh, December, we will have to pay in payday, who's gonna be in January of twenty-twenty-five, and we're trying to avoid that mess, uh, since we're separating, so.
Yeah, oh, I, I'm, I'm good with you on it, now I follow it.
Okay, anyone has a question about that?
Yeah, one thing that I would like to add for that is, um, these folks can contact Para, and they can get all of the contributions that they've paid into it back. I don't know that, um, they have enough service credits to be vested and have any kind of retirement, but they can get all of the money that has been put in for their portion.
Okay, and there is, uh, there is no, is there a time restriction on that? Or can they do that at any time, because if there is a time restriction, I need to know and help them do that before the end of the year?
There is not a time restriction, and they cannot ask for that until after their employment is completed.
Okay, all right, okay, so, um, is this like kinda, i- did you, was that with Para?
Correct.
Okay, and what did you call it, Nicole, one more time, I'm sorry?
So, when we put money in, generally, well, I'll just use social security and, and, um, generally, the employee and the employer put money in, and the same thing hap- So the money, the amount that they have contributed from their pay, they can get back upon termination.
Okay, okay, I will, I will let them know, and, uh, if you don't mind, if they're, I'll let them know, um, and if they have a question, can I send them to talk to you? Thank you, all right. Okay, any question about that specific subject to Nicole? Okay, we're set with that, Nicole.
Okay, great, um, can you see the Excel spreadsheet for the budget?
Um, I can see some numbers, uh, they're kinda small, but yeah.
Not the budget, though.
Let me do a share and see. There should be, I used the colors of the year, you guys might not know this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, now you got it.
Twenty-five is a light green color, and for twenty-twenty-four, it was this peachy color. Um, so, what we need to do here is we need to change any numbers for the final budget for this year, and the original budget for next year. So I went ahead and made just a couple of changes, um, we don't have to be spot on, but I just updated, uh, the original budget numbers, obviously, final budget is already over the original budget amount, so I changed that. The other item that I'm concerned about would be, uh, the, um, professional services, is that is running higher than what we had in there. I up that to one-fifty, we don't need to spend a hundred and fifty, it just needs to be available, do you think that is going to be enough?
Um.
For next year. And this year. Only numbers for both.
I think, uh, hundred and fifty will be suffice, since I don't think, uh, we're gonna, the, the, the only question is if we're gonna be approved for that, uh, tear out and stuff like that down the street, um, it might happen in twenty-twenty-five and it might not. Um, so, the one-fifty that you're correcting, is that for, um, you're correcting it for twenty-twenty-four, is that correct?
So I can make this lower, right, we had fifty thousand, so it does need to go back up, because we're already eighty. Um, this would be more than enough.
For, for, for this, for this year, yeah, I don't, I, I, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go over a hundred and fifty, a hundred percent.
Okay, just leave it a hundred and fifty, okay?
I'm okay with it, as long as you are for twenty-twenty-five, it's kind of a guess, to be honest, it all depends if we're gonna be approved first, you know what, um, I think it can be a hundred and fifty as well, the same. Because i- it's gonna take a little while, uh, to get everything done, um. Or if you wanna be careful, we can go and do, uh, twenty-twenty-four, we can go with a hundred thousand, cuz I think we're pretty much done with everything they've done already, and we can go two-hundred and be careful for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
That's my opinion, I would hear anyone, anyone else if, uh, they have a different one.
I concur with that.
Well, uh, the salaries were, well, I guess.
So we'll have no salaries for next year?
Well, that is correct.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure about that.
Uh, so, to my knowledge, uh, as far as employees, we can't have it at, 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 you know, in the beginning. Uh, I believe they were speaking about having maybe contractors, or they're, they're definitely not employees, it might be like, uh.
Right, they're not, not employee, uh, yeah, I, I'm not envisioning us having employees.
Not, 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 not to start with, yes, we have to basically speak to Pinnacle Consultant and uh, get to the bottom of it and find a way, uh, if we do, you know, go back and bring our employees back, they might be contractors and not employees, so we just, we just gotta explore it, and, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have, you know, at least, in my eyes, we're gonna have at least three months to kinda do it in the beginning of the year, um, uh, until we even get to the point where it's busy again, uh, so we, we, we will have a little bit of time to, to kinda go over that. At least that was my, my vision.
Okay, so, I'm taking all the money out of the payroll, or if we were to provide a payroll and have actual employees rather than contractors. Do you want me to put more money in for professional services other than this two-hundred thousand then?
Um, I mean, we could.
Make a new line that says, um, temporary employees or temp services or anything like that.
Uh, can we add like maybe temp, temp, uh, contractors or something like that?
Well, that's kind of what professional services is, so.
Okay, all right.
Thing contract services isn't going to differentiate what that is, but I can add a new account line and say, um, contracted employees.
Sure, I think that's, that sounds about right. And then we can go back to the, I think, I believe we were about, uh, uh, you know, not more than twenty-five thousand dollars to this, to this year, um, I think it's less than twenty, actually, if I look at the papers.
How much do you want me to put in the budget for next year, gentlemen?
Let me just find what's, uh, I think it's, let's go with twenty, because I think we did not cross twenty, um, on this, on this year's, uh, with employees. Is that correct?
Thus far, we're only at, for all of, all of the salaries plus all of the associated items, it's eleven thousand.
Yeah, uh, twenty would suffice, I think, just in case.
And the other area that I'll need to know is, do you know how much your contract is going to be next year? For your services?
Uh, that we do not know, uh, it will take a little bit of time to kinda, because I believe they're, you know, just like you, by hourly, each department is a little different, so it will take a little bit of, um, running to actually know. Um, you still, you still, you still need a number, don't you?
Needs to be over the amount.
Um. Let's, let's go with sixty thousand dollars. And I'm coming up with the sixty thousand, just because that's what we're kinda paying the city, uh, I believe the city's fifty-four.
That makes sense, uh, until we know better, at least gives us, uh, a, a target area.
Yep, okay.
Okay, and then, um, the other thing that I did was I reduced the amount of payment for the loan, obviously, you'll have that down payment um, in there, and that'll have to be set up also for those, those monthly payments. Anything else, and I took out, I thought, um, we're not gonna spend the Conservation Trust Fund money for the lottery this year, so I just took that out, put the six thousand for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Does this look good, we can still make changes if something comes up when I present the official budget for the next meeting?
Um. For now, everything looks okay.
All right, I think I am done, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Nicole? All right, thank you, Nicole. Our. Yeah, let's approve these, uh, two reports, oh, wait a second. Well, let's finish with new business and then we'll approve the, approve the reports, if that's okay with you, Kristen?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, uh, discussion on employee, we did that, thank you, uh, budget is done, um, all right, and the last, uh, new item is the discussion about the fence and window boarding at the youth past property, uh, it's been six months, and we paid for six months, so now we got a decision to make, do we wanna leave that fencing, um, up there, um, do we wanna take it down, do we wanna take the fence and the boarding down? Um, what's your pleasure, the, the amount for keeping it, um, is about, um, between thirty-eight hundred to four thousand dollars. Um. Um, so, now we gotta make a decision. What do you guys say? Do we wanna pay an extra four thousand dollars, so it's, uh, fenced for the next six months, or do we wanna have it eliminated, or at least the fence, uh, or both? Um, so it's open, and then, I, I saw you guys spoke about, um, last month when I was gone, um, you guys wanna take a look at it? Um, I'm ready whenever you guys are, uh, we can set it up, I believe we need to make a, we need to put a notice, um, if it's all of us, or at least three of us, we have to make, we have to put a notice up there, uh, that we're gonna go and take a look. Um, so, discussion about a couple of things, I guess.
Well, fir- first of all, uh, Nicole, we're covered in liability if we take the fence down and somebody goes in there and does some damage, or gets hurt themselves, are we covered?
We have basic insurance, yes, um. Just be safe.
What?
Just be safe, let's not put anyone in a dangerous position.
Okay.
So it's probably good to keep the fences up. Because that way, even though we're covered with insurance, I mean, people are idiots, we've got homeless people around town, we don't want them going in there and doing something, if at least we say we have the fence up, at least we covered our own.
Okay, Barsati for leaving the fence up. Ralph, or, uh, Mike?
Yeah, well, there's no other option, so, we were not ready to, to move anything, so, yeah, we gotta keep the fence up, absolutely.
We don't have to keep the fence up, we're paying for it, four thousand dollars every, uh, six months or so.
Well, I don't know what condition is, if, so.
Um.
When do we need to decide that?
I believe October twenty-sixth is when six months are passed, if I, if, if my memory is good.
I think Mike's saying something, but I can't hear him. Mike, you're. I got, I got muted again, I, I don't know. There must be a, a leprechaun muting me or something, but, which is probably a good idea. But I guess.
Can hear you now.
I guess my question is, have we progressed at all with the planning department?
Uh, the, the, the answer is yes and no, we've submitted, uh, everything we thought that would suffice them, uh, but I got an email back from Fred that says it is not enough. Uh, they would like more reports and more, um, more stuff that would take longer and more expensive, and they would like to have that upfront, I am not sure why. Um. It, it might be so, uh, it takes you a little bit longer, uh, we might need those reports later on for, uh, in front of city council, uh, but in my opinion, we don't need those for HPC. Um, but guess what, their opinion is gonna matter more. Uh, so, basically, we're gonna have to go and explore a different way, uh, um, you know, gotta find a firm that would basically create all those analysis, um, and, and by then, you can go in front of HPC. Um, it's gonna take Um, it's gonna take months more.
I thought, I thought we just had to do those certain things that were specified in the first place to get it to HPC. And then I thought there was two or three other permits we had to work on.
Correct, and all those things were met by Glenn. Uh, but yet, we are not going forward, uh Fred is uh saying that we're still missing. Uh, missing uh some reports. Um, I can, I can definitely, what I thought about doing is maybe, it's two options, one is to request a meeting with Fred. Um, you know, possibly Denise as well, city administrator, and see why we're being asked for those reports upfront. Um, which, if that's the case, I'd like someone else to be in that meeting with me. Um, and the second option is just to um give them what they want. And, and, and just go and find a, 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 a firm, an, an engineer firm. Uh, that has all the tools uh to create those specific uh, uh reports. And when they're done, um, you know, uh so many months down the road, so many dollars down the drain. Uh, then we will be able to go in front of HPC, we, and might, this might be the, the only way.
So being that we may be in the same position in six months. From now, do we want to pay for this coming six months and then? Pay again in another six months, I mean, I guess, maybe.
That's why I'm bringing it to you guys.
And I don't know, you know, I don't know what else to say, except that uh maybe. Maybe we should. Have pushed that fence back, well. I don't know, I don't know what to tell you, I really don't, I just. Um, doesn't seem like any of this has been. Done in a very good uh. Seems like the whole deal from the first time that we talked to, that I talked to Fred. Everything was fine until Denise came in, then after that, everything's been just thrown in front of us to stop us. So. I, I can't make a decision, I don't know one way or the other what to do. Really don't.
I, I'd like to go back to Nicole with that liability business, I, I maybe not hearing very well, but. If we take the fence down, are, are we still covered with liability insurance?
So when I set up the insurance, I basically just said that we were, we didn't really want to ensure the structure because we planned on tearing it down and. Uh, plan on having parking space, we just provided them with information that I had. I'm not clear exactly what type of liability insurance it has on that. I'm sure that it would be covered if somebody was generally injured, but I just want you to say.
We, we need to read the policy and talk to the agent, who, who can we talk to?
I can send you the information, you can directly, Mike.
Okay.
Do you want to take that on, Mike?
Not really, because I'm. Really busy, you can, you can take it if you want, Larry, um.
Alright, send me the information, I'll, I'll make the phone calls.
Yeah, it's just to me, uh you gotta talk to the agent to really find out what's covered and what isn't covered, and. Normally, when you get your policy, there's eighty pages of what isn't covered. So, it, they don't really tell you what's covered, they tell you everything that's excluded, so you kind of need to talk to the agent.
We ever get a asbestos report back, or what's the thing about the asbestos, did I miss that?
Oh, it's, there is, it's, it's been removed, it's been done, been paid for.
Oh, that's totally done, I didn't know, okay, totally done.
Absolutely, that's.
Okay, well, that's a big change then, I mean, we, we didn't want it to burn up with the asbestos in it, so now. They're really, that was a big concern, I remember, um.
Yes, it was, uh that's, that's been eliminated, so.
Well, I'm almost changing my mind now. I, what can, what damage could happen now to it?
We, we could take the fence down and let the homeless take it over.
And uh, well, we just call the police and they will uh, you know, trespassing. We do have uh police support, I mean, we don't.
You know, and that's how the LaFawn got torn down, was the police got called so much, then they, they hurried to tear down the LaFawn.
Uh, if we do take the fence down, I think we should keep the plywood up over the doors and windows.
Okay.
And that we're securing the building by doing that.
That's true. Yeah, I'm backtracking quick here, so I, I'd like to save the four thousand dollars, we, but. We could put a, sign up, no trespassing, I guess.
Okay, so if I hear.
Isn't there a little mini gate too, for cars not be able to pull in, don't we have a little chain going across?
Uh, I don't remember a chain over there.
Well. Let's do a special meeting to decide, that's be the one thing we could decide next, in the next two weeks.
Okay, the only problem, and I, you know, I, I'm good with the meeting, but on the meeting, if I'm not mistaken, we're, I guess. Don't need to take minutes as long as we don't decide anything, if I remember good. Um, if we have a discussion and we decide on, you know, that, that. Direction, then we have to take minutes, um and then, you know, probably need Kristen over there, that would be my guess.
I see.
Or we can keep it ourselves. Um. Okay, we can definitely, we can definitely set up a meeting for uh next, I mean, tomorrow as far as. I care, it doesn't matter, I'm in town, um it's up, it's up to you guys, well, it's not, it cannot be tomorrow, Kristen needs a twenty-four hour um, um to, to post it. Um.
So we could do Friday, it's the earliest we could do, then you're saying, yeah, we can't do it tomorrow, we could do Friday, or we can do it next week, right?
Correct, that is correct.
We can't make any decisions about it, right?
Uh, I guess I need Kristen's help on that one, um. So we, I'm not sure.
So we, we're discussing it right now, and we, we can't make a decision right now, or?
No, we can make a decision on the fence and the window boarding right now.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can make, we can schedule a meeting to go over there as well.
Oh, okay.
How about, okay, if I heard you guys right, I heard the majority say. Not to pay four thousand dollars for the fence, but we would like to leave the boards up on the windows and boarding to prevent anyone from getting in there. Does, does that sound? Something you can move with?
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds real good to me, yeah.
Okay, one, two.
Yeah.
Uh, Barsadi said he wanted the fence down, I remember, but maybe.
I'll defer to the, the decision of the board, we, if, as long as we're covered, then yeah, let's leave the boards up and take the fence down.
Oh.
Good idea.
Okay, alright, um.
We can always put it back up too.
Yes, correct, we just, yeah.
Call Murphy and put it back up, right, that's his fence?
Yes, correct.
Right, so we can always call him up and say, hey, put the fence back up real quick.
Okay, sounds.
Uh, we, we could uh go ahead and, and vote on this, and if we decide to take the fence down. If, Nicole, if you will send me that insurance information, I will go ahead and call. And if I find that we have to have a fence. Or insurance liabilities, I'll let everybody know, but in the meantime, we can go ahead and vote to take it down.
Good.
And uh, uh then I'll praise you later, if there is, uh if I do find that there's a, an, an, an issue.
Okay, that sounds like a plan, um, anybody wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we uh remove the fence, but retain. The uh plywood over the boards and windows.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, and Fabrice, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, that would be five to zero, Barsadi second. Okay, um. Okay, well, did you guys want to set up something, and, and I know it's. Again, I gotta speak or ask Kristen about this, but it's not on the agenda, it's not a new business, but. Do we want to set up a time to go over there Friday or next week sometime? Early next week sometime, so we can walk the property. Uh, I know I've heard from Ralph that he would like to do that. Does somebody else wants to do that, that? Is it gonna be all of us going? And if so, what day is favorite for you guys?
I, I might say that it's not necessary for me to go look at it.
Okay, uh, Mike?
Fri- well, Friday morning's best for me.
I could do Friday morning.
Okay, that's two already, uh Ralph?
I can do Friday morning at ten.
Friday at ten?
I can't do before ten, really.
Okay.
And a tennis, you know, ten thirty even would be better for me.
Maybe, maybe eleven.
Eleven's sweet for me.
Okay, um. Uh, Barsadi, you good with eleven?
Yeah, yeah, eleven.
Okay, Friday at eleven, uh I'll just send an email to Kristen. Uh, the request that she can post tomorrow. Uh, that we are meeting there Friday eleven o'clock in the morning.
Hope it doesn't rain. We can do in the rain, not a big deal. Haven't seen rain in so long.
Bring your raincoat. They're promising, they're promising rain on Saturday.
I haven't seen rain in two months, what has it been, I don't know, anyway.
We hope, yeah.
Okay, Friday, eleven AM, I will be there, yay.
You got it.
And it's open to the public, kinda, so we will have.
No, it's just us, Ralph, after we walk there, you, we can decide if you want an open house for everyone else.
Right, but I'm just saying, it, the public could show up, it's a meeting.
So I can, I can speak to that a bit, actually, sorry. Um, so I sent an email to Shemi, I don't know if you got to see that one, um, kind of, uh that was, it was after the last meeting. Um, it is still technically a public meeting since you guys have a quorum, so we're required to post notice, and um. What we recommend doing is um recording it, at least in audio, which I can, um, you were talking about this Friday morning, right?
Talking about two days from now, if possible.
Alright, um, I, I believe that I am available, um I can confirm that via email later, if that's alright. Um, and I can bring a recording device, um that way, if the public wants to request that recording, they can. Um, so it would be a public meeting, but um we wouldn't, you know, be having public, if that makes sense. So that's how we would apply with sunshine laws.
So the public could show up for that meeting?
They, they would not, um, they, we don't have to allow them a property, we can provide them with a recording at their.
Okay, got it, okay, alright, understood.
Well, I think if the public show up, we should let them follow us.
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Me neither.
Okay. Okey dokey, uh so we're, we're gonna be set for Friday eleven o'clock, I'll just uh verify. Uh, with you, Kristen, a little bit later today, uh via email, to make sure that you're available too. And, and uh if you.
Exciting.
If you want, I can grab the recorder, or if you want to join us, you're more than welcome as well, no problem.
Alright, we'll sort it out.
Okay, sounds good, I'll, I'll stop by probably tomorrow to see you. Um, alright.
Hey, Shemi.
Yes.
Before we conclude, there are a couple of things that I just wanted to uh touch on. Uh, one was a, a revisit from last month's meeting. Um, the discussion regarding the, the parking logic signage and equipment. That was deferred last weekend, uh you weren't able to make the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, would you mind taking some time to, to go over that?
Uh, we can, as long as it's uh, I know, I don't know, it's not on the agenda, but I mean, we can speak about it for a little bit.
That, yes, you can talk about it, you just can't vote on it since it's not on the agenda, um that receiver act on board correspondence section is. And good, and things like that.
I lost, I lost you, it's hard to, it was hard to uh hear you, Kristen, what'd you say?
I'm sorry, I think, I think. I'm sorry, Mike, I muted you because I think there's some background noise coming through. Um, but uh I was saying the receiver act on board correspondence section of the agenda, it's good for you guys to. Be able to have discussion about some things that might come up like that. Um, but no voting because it's not officially on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, yes, if I remember good, I emailed James, uh it's been a little while now. Uh, about those um. Counters, um I believe they don't work right, uh they haven't worked right for a little, a little while. And we asked him to, or I asked him that day to kind of shut it off, uh because it wasn't showing the right amount. Uh, they've been working on it on and off, and it, and it was still not performing. Um, we kind of need to decide, and I think that's what you're referring to, James, correct me if I'm wrong, but we need to decide if we want to take the poles out or the num, the, the, the. Um. The screens that are showing the counters, um i- i- is that what you're looking for, a decision on those, if you want to take those down or not?
Yes.
Okay, um. Okay, uh discussion, you guys, um I, I, I think they can go, um there's no, no, no reason for them. Um, they are, most of the time, or at least when I walk, they're off. By, by off, it's not just off, uh they're just not counting right. Um, the multiple times, I've sent multiple emails showing that they're, they're off completely, they're uh, they're just. You know, no, no, no uh open spaces inside the lot, and it's showing thirty-six, fifty-two, uh and, and some numbers that are delusional. Um, so I think it's just easier to eliminate them, that's my opinion. Um, Mike, Ralph, uh Larry, yours, what's your opinion on this?
Yeah, the, the thing is, they're supposed to be accurate to what's, what's real in the, in the parking lot, and if it's not real, we shouldn't have it.
Okay, um, anybody else?
I don't have an opinion on this topic, really, so I'm not gonna comment, I really don't know.
Okay.
Pros or cons, so I'll let you guys decide this one.
Alright, um, Mike, Graham, or Barsadi?
Well, there we go, I'm sorry. Um, my only opinion is that when you pass the swimming pool and it says that all the parking lots are full. That people are gonna turn around and go to Colorado City instead of Manitou. But I almost feel like that's what some of those city council people that got elected two years ago, what they wanted. They wanted to shut off downtown Manitou when they deemed the town was full. And so now we've got a sign that tells people maybe erroneously that the town's full. And they turn around and leave before they even get here. Um, so, that's one obstacle to people coming into town, maybe turning around and leaving before they get here. Um, there's some other signage too on the outside of town, which is different from this subject, but it does the same thing. There's some signage that routes people back to Colorado Springs instead of into Manitou, even though it says downtown Manitou. It directs them back to Highway twenty-four, so, you know, there's some signage, there's these other lights that uh. Both of them are kind of preventing some people from coming into town. So I guess as far as, you know, I agree with Shemi if he wants to get rid of them.
Okay, I, I mean, one, one, one more thing is if we eliminate those, then they don't count. Um, and they're not gonna say at the beginning of the, uh it's not gonna show uh on the, on the. on the on the electronic sign by the pool or anywhere else, because uh, basically, the city won't have a count on Smishney or uh Wichita. Um, so. Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, and I hope James knows that we appreciate everything he does, and we appreciate all the other folks in parking, what they do. It's just something that doesn't seem to be working right.
And absolutely, okay. All right, so we can, I can add this to the agenda for uh next month. Uh, we kinda have a direction here to to remove them. Uh, we can just add it to the agenda to be approved. Uh, but I think you heard the direction we're going. Uh, James, you agree?
Yeah, I I mean, if 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 it's something that's negatively impacting and we're not able to get it working uh to to expectations. Um, I I mean, it would make sense that you wouldn't wanna have it in your lot, so. Um, so it makes sense to me.
If we're going forward uh next month and we're voting on it uh and going that direction, um uh are we removing the sensors that are there? Um.
Yeah, so um, pretty much it would be the the sensors um, and the 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 signage and posts. Um. And uh, and then probably the delineators along with it. Um.
Okay, before, I think I've sent an email. That's where we stopped. Uh, but I before we do that, can we actually, me and you um, or or anyone from the board uh that wants to join, but can we meet at the two lots to make sure that um, we're we're taking the right things out and uh leaving, you know, I I just wanna make sure we're, you know, it we might take the the um counters off, but maybe the post can be served for something else. So I just wanna make sure before you dig in and you're doing some serious work, uh, I don't I don't wanna bring something back after we've done something already. So if we can have a a a a small walk by uh on two lots to make sure we're on, um, you know, we're we're we know exactly what's coming off, uh, that would be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that. Um, and then uh along with that, there's one other topic. You don't necessarily have to discuss it now, but I just wanna bring it up as a as a consideration. Um, but with I don't know if 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 you intend on offering parking permits in the the Wichita lot going forward. Um, I would, uh, once you, I know you guys are still trying to get everything together as far as that goes, but um, once you do have an idea and you know how you're gonna go about doing it, um, just let us know uh so that we can direct those customers that are seeking those permits um, back to you guys, um, or even direct them. If it's gonna be online, they can direct them to the website. Just any information that you can provide on that, just anytime you have that available, just make sure you pass that along to me.
Okay, and I think uh that's on my uh radar for November's meeting. Uh, uh, that and a couple more things that I think that needs to be uh addressed uh before before January the first of twenty twenty-five. Uh, there is uh the permits, there is, I believe, the restroom. Um, there is a couple of issues over there or uh uh subjects that needs to be resolved. Um, and and I'll send, um, I'll send an email um about all those hopefully before November meeting. Um, I'll make sure it's before November meeting, so we have time to to address those issues.
All right, that's good.
Okay, thank you for that.
Uh, it looks like Nicole has something to add.
Okay.
Please stop by uh finance and sign that uh document for the county regarding the borders.
Uh, was that for me, Nicole? I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Could you stop in in finance and sign that document for the borders for the on the property lines?
Yes, yes, I can. Um, it'll be tomorrow. Is that okay? Thank you. All right, uh, I think we got everything done on the new business. Um, public comment? Is there public with us today?
No.
All right.
But I just wanted to go back to.
You say yes? You got me excited there. What'd you say?
No, no, it's that, um, I don't see any public, um, but if you want to go back to possibly.
Uh. I don't hear you well. I I can someone else hear?
No, I couldn't hear.
Kristen, are you with us?
It sounds like maybe your earbuds have died out.
Oh, maybe. Let's give her another minute, just just in case.
Hello.
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Problem with my headphones. Um, I was, I think you wanted to vote on the finance and parking reports, right?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion to approve both parking and finance report. Is there a second? Oh, second. Paul and Faber say hi.
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 Hi. Any opposed? That would be five to zero. All right, thank you so much. Um, all right, um, Receiver Act or Board the Correspond- Correspondence, uh, if anybody has anything else before we adjourn. All right. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I appreciate everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.